Good evening. My name is Justin Lardenwood. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Please remember to turn off your cellphones. The parking validation machine for the garage under City Hall is located at the rear of the chambers at the top of the stairs. Following roll call during summary hearing procedure, we will review how the public may provide comment during today's session. At this time, we'll salute the flag.
All right, now we'll take roll call. I'm Justin Lardenwood. I'm the Chair. I'm here. Vice Chair on Ellis Wise?
Here.
Commissioner Barocchio is absent. Commissioner Bickford?
Here.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Oliverio is absent. Commissioner Rosario is as well. Commissioner Torrios?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
All right, I believe that's eight in attendance? You have the same number, John? Great. Okay, now for the summary of hearing procedures. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards at the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. The procedure, excuse me, the procedure for this hearing is as follows. After staff's presentation, applicants and/or repellents may make up to a five-minute presentation. During the public comment period, the Chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards and the order received for those members of the public who attend in person. As your name is called, line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. Generally, each speaker will be given up to two minutes for public testimony, and speakers using a translator will have up to four minutes. At the discretion of the Chair, the time allotted to each speaker may be changed depending on the number of items on the agenda, number of speakers, and other factors. Speakers using a translator will have double the time allotted. After the public testimony, the applicant and/or repellent may make closing remarks for up to an additional five minutes. Planning Commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. In response to Commissioner questions, will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed, and then the Planning Commission will take action on the item. The Planning Commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The Planning Commission's action on rezonings, pre-zonings, and general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the City Council. The City Council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protests to the City Council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The Planning Commission's action on conditional use permits is appealable to the City Council in accordance with Section 20.120.220 of the municipal code. Agendas and all staff reports to this meeting may be accessed through the city's website. Want to acknowledge at this time that Commissioner Rosario has joined us. All right, call to order on orders of the day. Before we begin, I want to remind the Planning Commission members and members of the public to follow our code of conduct at meetings. This includes commenting on the specific agenda item only and addressing the full body. Public speakers will not engage in conversation with the Commissioners or staff. All members of the Planning Commission's staff and the public are expected to refrain from abusive language. Repeated failure to comply with the code of conduct will disturb, disrupt, or impede the orderly conduct of this meeting. May result in removal from the meeting. This meeting of the Planning Commission will now come to order. Commissioners Oliverio and Barocchio are now with us. All right, public comments. So, this is time for public comments to Planning Commission on non-agendized items. Please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the technician. Each member of the public may address the commission for up to two minutes. The commission cannot take any formal action without the item being properly noticed and placed on an agenda. In response to public comment, the Planning Commission is limited to the following options: responding to statements made or questions posed by members of the public, or requesting staff to report back on a matter at a subsequent hearing, or directing staff to place the item on a future agenda. And I'll note that at this time, the city is only accepting public comment in person. Do we have any speakers for public comments to speak on things not on tonight's agenda? I don't have any cards for that. I don't see anybody standing up. So, seeing none, we'll move on. All right, deferrals and removals from calendar. Any items scheduled for hearing this evening for which deferral is being requested will be taken out of order and be heard first on the matter of deferral or removal. Staff will provide an update on the items for which deferral or removal is being requested. If you want to change any of the deferral dates, recommended, or speak to the question of deferring or removing these or any other items, you should say so at this time. And we have one item for deferral. This is ER 20-049, which is a supplemental environmental impact report for the Milligan Parking Lot Project. John, any commentary on that?
It's not.
Okay, yeah.
Good morning. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. David Keon, Principal Planner, Environmental Review. There was an error where this item was noticed, and it actually does not, is not, does not have to go to Planning Commission. It is going directly to City Council. So therefore, it's dropped and will be scheduled for the City Council hearing on June 11th.
Okay, thank you. And just, we haven't had a deferral in a while. Just want to clarify, since it's, or removal, since we haven't had one in a while, it's, since it's listed on the agenda, we don't need to like vote on that or anything, right? Okay, great. So we will move on to the consent calendar. Notice the public, there will be no separate discussion of individual consent calendar items. They consider to be routine will be adopted by one motion. If a member of the commission requests debate, separate vote, or recusal on a particular item, the item may be removed from the consent calendar by the Chair and considered separately. The public may comment on the entire consent calendar, and any items removed from the consent calendar by the Chair. Staff will provide an update on the consent calendar. If you wish to speak on one of these items individually, please come up to the podium at this time. For our consent calendar tonight, we have our minutes from the April 10th meeting. And then we also have item 4B, CP 23-07, ER 23-049, which is a conditional use permit for Raising Canes' location at 340 North Capitol Avenue. I've been advised by our attorney that we actually need to pull this from the consent calendar, so we'll do that. So, consent calendar now is just the minutes from April 10th.
Motion to approve the minutes?
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Oliverio and a second from Casey. Assume no public comment, but this would be the time. All right, let's have a roll call vote on that. Vice Chair on Ellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's 11 yes, zero no. That passes. Also, great to have a full house tonight. Thanks, everybody, for being here. I'll turn it over to staff for item 4B.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This is Laura Miners, Planning Supervisor, filling in for Alec Atienza, the Planning Project Manager. Give me one second. I'm going to share my screen. This one. Okay. This is the site plan for the project. I would like to read into the record that we added conditions 33, 34, 35, and 39 point N point Roman numeral 2 into the permit resolution based on comments received from the Santa Clara Valley Water District on April 19th, 2024, in coordination with the project applicant and the Department of Public Works. Please note that the additional conditions do not change the project use or findings of consistency with the general plan, zoning ordinance, citywide design guidelines, or council policies, and do not result in changes to the conclusions of the CEQA exemption prepared for the project. No changes to the staff report are proposed. On page 22 of the resolution, the following conditions are added. Condition 33, encroachment permit required. A portion of the project site is located within a valley water easement that traverses the project site. Any work within the valley waters easement will require issuance of a valley water encroachment permit as per Valley Waters Water Resources Protection Ordinance prior to building permit or public works permit issuance, whichever occurs first. Issuance of a valley water encroachment permit is a discretionary act and requires Valley Water to be considered a responsible agency under CEQA. Condition 34, water well closure. There may be an existing water well located on the project site. Prior to the issuance of a building permit or public works permit, the project permittee shall close all water wells on the site in compliance with the destruction standards of the Santa Clara Valley Water District to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works. Condition 35, valley water easement. Any trees proposed to be located within the valley water easement will be required to be relocated to avoid the canopy and the root structure at maturity encroaching into valley waters easement prior to building permit or public works permit issuance. Specifically, Valley Water has identified Megalita Creek, currently labeled as City Storm Drain System, on the project plans. The plans will be revised to show Valley Waters easement and correctly label Megalita Creek. Drainage will be redirected to the existing public storm drainage system instead of the proposed multiple connections to Valley Waters Megalita Creek. On page 32 of the resolution, the following condition is added. Condition 39 point N point Roman numeral 2. The applicant shall coordinate directly with Valley Water for proposed storm drain connections to Valley Waters 62-inch and 72-inch main and obtain appropriate permits. If the applicant cannot obtain the necessary permits, applicant shall propose alternative connections to the City of San Jose Public Storm Drain Maines and coordinate with Public Works. This concludes the additional conditions added to the resolution. I will now begin my staff report for the public hearing agenda portion. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow the removal of four trees, including one ordinance-sized and three non-ordinance-sized trees, with 32 replacement trees, for the construction of an approximately 3,215 square-foot restaurant, Raising Canes', with dual drive-through lanes and late-night hours until 3:30 a.m. on an approximately 0.79-growth acre site. The store will be staffed by approximately 50 to 75 full and part-time employees with an average of 12 employees per shift. The subject site is located on the northeastern side of North Capitol Avenue, (cough) excuse me, approximately 1,000 feet northwest of the McKee Road intersection at 340 North Capitol Avenue. (cough) Excuse me. The 0.79-growth acre project site is located within a larger 30.9-acre Capital Square Shopping Center. The proposed restaurant is located within the central portion of the shopping center along North Capitol Avenue in an area currently developed with surface parking. The shopping center is generally bounded by a shopping center, by the shopping center and a mobile home park across North Capitol Avenue on the west, commercial retail and multifamily residential uses across McKee Road to the south, a self-storage facility and a middle school across Rough and Ready Road on the east, and a residential neighborhood to the north. The shopping center is developed with multiple buildings consisting of general retail uses, restaurants, banks, a fuel service station, and associated surface parking. The project is consistent with the regional commercial general plan land use designation, the CG Commercial General Zoning District, and the citywide design guidelines. The project includes a drive-through use as well as late-night operating hours, and has been found to be consistent with the City Council Policy 6-10 for drive-through uses, City Council Policy 6-27 for late-night uses, and Council Policy 6-30 for public outreach. The police department is neutral to the late-night use at the subject site. The reported crime statistics for the area are not over the 20% crime index. Therefore, the site is not considered over-concentrated with regard to crime. A CEQA exemption was prepared for the project under the provisions of Section 15303 for new construction or conversion of small structures to the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. An acoustical analysis was received and analyzed for noise impacts. A Phase I environmental site assessment was received and analyzed for hazardous waste impacts. And an air quality assessment was received and analyzed for emission impacts caused by the drive-through. It was determined that all impacts are less than significant, and the project would not result in any significant impact to applicable resources such as air quality, biological resources, hazards, and hazardous materials, or transportation. Staff therefore recommends that the Commissioners find that the project is in conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act and approve the conditional use permit. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thanks, Laura. Okay, um, so this would be the time for the applicant to make a five-minute presentation if they'd like to?
Mr. Chair, Jay Higgins, representing Raising Canes'. I don't have a presentation. We were ready for this to be on consent. However, understand that it needs to be polled, and we're fine with the new conditions of approval. It really just has to do with the storm drain connection point. We don't have any improvements in the easement except for the connections to the storm drain, and we're happy to work with that agency for an encroachment permit for that work. We don't have any trees that are going in their easement, so we don't think that's an issue. But I can answer any questions you might have. We're happy to be here. We're about to break ground on another restaurant in San Jose, Capitol Evergreen area, so we're excited to be in San Jose. And this will be our second location, somewhat of a reuse of a surface parking lot, so we're looking forward to activating that area, and we think we're a good fit. And I can take any questions you might have.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we can take public comment on this item. Do we have any members of the public who want to speak on this project, or this application, rather? Okay, seeing none. The applicant does have another five minutes, but up to you a few. Yeah. Okay, we'll turn it over to the commission. Commissioner Bickford?
Thank you. Two questions. The first one was, 3:30 in the morning is an interesting closing time. I'm just curious about, does it serve a public need to be open until 3:30 in the morning?
The project was analyzed for late-night use and was found to be consistent with that policy. I will defer to the applicant for the actual utility of that hour.
Mr. Chair of the commission, late-night hours are something that Canes' likes to provide to the community. We have a lot of shift worker popularity. So, whether it be students or people that are in emergency services, it's a big thing. And when there's no other options out there, we like to provide that. We do keep a very tight ship in terms of security and in terms of closing the patio. And after dark, we don't want our crew to be unsafe, so we patrol that, secure that, clean it up, and nice and tidy, clean site at all hours of the day is good for business. So, sure.
Thanks. Any other questions or commentary from the commission? Commissioner on Ellis Wise, our Vice Chair on Ellis Wise?
I also had a question regarding that 3:30, just because it kind of seemed kind of late to me. Do you, how many other facilities that you, do you have that go to 3:30?
Mr. Chair, to the commission, yes, all of them are.
All of them are?
Yeah.
And where are they located?
Well, we're relatively new in California, but I would say, well, nationwide, we have about 800 restaurants open. California, that number is probably closer to 50, I'm guessing. We have a lot that are in the development phase right now, but we've got open restaurants in the Bay Area, certainly in Southern California. We're almost through Plan Check in Salinas. We were in Morgan Hill last night at a Planning Commission hearing for an approval, and we're looking forward to breaking ground in San Jose.
Okay, good. And for staff, in regards to the crime index, you said it didn't exceed 20%, but did you know where it was in that area?
The police memo only mentioned that it did not exceed the 20% crime index.
Okay.
Commissioner Cantrell, I saw your hand go up, but...
Yeah, I can't find the specific one. I moved it. We approve this.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion from Commissioner Cantrell and a second from Commissioner Oliverio. I see, Commissioner Bickford, do you have your hand up again? Yeah.
Sorry, I had one other question about the general area, and that, is there anything else in this area that is open at those hours? Or is this the only thing? Do we know?
There are...
It's in a, it's in a large mall, right?
Yeah, there are...
There's a Chase Bank, there's a Target, there's...
There's also a Wiener Schnitzel across the street. There are multiple other restaurants in the area. I did not do the research as to the hours that they're open, but I believe Wiener Schnitzel is open in the late hours.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, as someone who does sometimes seek food that late at night, there's basically nowhere in San Jose open that late except places that are open 24 hours. So, I think that's a value add. But let's go to the vote, since there's no other hands up. Vice Chair on Ellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's 11 yes, zero no. And that's an approval. All right, moving on. The reason why folks are here tonight, we have CPA 19-036-01 and ER 24-03. This is an amendment to an existing conditional use permit for the Primrose School at 1,002 South Deansa Boulevard. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This is Laura Miners again, Planning Supervisor, filling in for Alec Atienza, the Project Manager for this request for a conditional use permit amendment to amend the permit conditions of a previously approved conditional use permit, file number CP 19-036, to allow the playgrounds at an existing daycare Primrose School to operate from 8:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Monday through Friday on an approximately 0.72-growth acre site. I've shared with you the site plan from the original approved plan, showing the three playground sites shaded there. The existing and planned capacity of the daycare is 154 students. The permit amendment will not change the capacity of the daycare. The daycare serves students ages 12 months through five years of age. The total number of staff at capacity is 22, with 19 full-time and four part-time employees. Current hours of operation are 7:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. The project includes three outdoor play areas totaling approximately 4,450 square feet located adjacent to the south side of the building. The previously approved conditional use permit, approved on September 9th, 2020, included conditions restricting the hours of operation of the play areas to 8:30 a.m. to 11 a.m. and 3 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. These conditions were included to align with the operations plan that was provided at the, excuse me, the time of approval. The hours were not a restriction of the noise study or the CEQA review. The subject site is located on the east side of South Deansa Boulevard, approximately 200 feet north of Ventana Drive at 1002 South Deansa Boulevard. The site is bordered by a vacant restaurant to the north, multifamily residences to the east, a driveway to the south serving the multifamily residences to the east, and a restaurant, Fobon Me, to the west. The site is consistent with the neighborhood community commercial general plan land use designation, the CP Commercial Pedestrian Zoning District, and council development policies. A CEQA exemption was prepared for the project under the provisions of Section 15301 of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. The key consideration of CEQA guidelines, Section 15301, is whether the project involves negligible or no expansion of the use. The project will not result in any physical changes to the existing building or playgrounds. There are no changes to the maximum number of children allowed on the playgrounds at any time, which is 56 children, nor will there be any increase in enrollment. The project will not result in a significant impact to applicable resources such as air quality... applicable resources such as air quality, biological resources, hazards, and hazardous materials or transportation. Additionally, no new noise impacts will occur due to the change of outdoor playground areas, hours. The original permit limits the number of children playing outside to not exceed 56, and these children will be distributed throughout all three playgrounds around the project site. At the loudest, the projected noise levels during the proposed play hours would not exceed existing ambient noise levels. The presence of a sound wall also helps mitigate noise exposure. The overall impact is deemed less than significant due to existing fences and the noise levels remaining within acceptable limits. Staff therefore recommends that the commissioners find that the project is in conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act and approve the conditional use permit amendment. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Laura. At this time, we'll have five minutes for a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, Chair Lardinois, members of the commission. My name is Eric Shaneauer, and I represent Seema and Amar Chukwala, who are the owners and operators of this Primrose School. This is an existing facility. When the original CUP was approved by the Planning Commission in 2020, it was an inadvertent mistake that only the organized recess hours were put as allowed hours for the playground, and it did not account for the free play time that is, that is a common part of the children's day. So this request tonight is to fix that mistake and allow playground use from 8:30 to 5:30 p.m. as, and is recommended approved by staff. How did this happen? The applicant submitted an operation plan that included the organized recess, and those hours, limited hours, got put into the permit conditions, even though there was no policy reason, noise reason, or SEQA reason that that limitation was placed there. The applicant did not understand that children would then not be allowed to even go in the playground outside those hours. This negatively impacts the operation of the center and negatively impacts the children's physical activity. There is one primary city policy that governs what's happening here, and it's on the screen. The City of San Jose Guidelines for Child Care Policy 6-14. It's a five-page policy, but I've highlighted the two sort of operative sections. Number one is, under operations, it says to minimize adverse impacts to adjacent residences, childcare centers adjacent to residential neighborhoods should operate only from 6 a.m. to 7 p.m. Monday through Friday. So if you, if you look at the history of the city reviewing and approving childcares, that's pretty much the allowed hours when they're next to a residential neighborhood. And then, under the site design, it says that a wall may be required to minimize potential impacts from outdoor play and parking areas to the surrounding residential uses. And as you'll see in our project, we definitely have a wall that sort of looks like East Berlin. So the playground hours that we're asking for are actually less than what is allowed by city policy. So as we already mentioned, the, the city allowed childcare operating hours in the, in the guidelines are 6 a.m. to 7 p.m. And there's nothing in the guidelines that says that the play yard should be any different than the operating hours of the center itself. Primrose on Deansa's hours of operation actually are less than what's allowed by the city, 7:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. And those are conditioned hours, so they cannot operate outside those hours, the overall center. And then lastly, the newly proposed playground hours are from 8:30 to 5:30, I'm sorry, 8:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., typo on my part. But the point in showing this is to say that this owner is trying to be responsible. They're not pushing the envelope. The city's guidelines could allow them to have playground hours from 6 a.m. to 7 p.m., but they're not asking for that, and they're trying to be reasonable here. Just to orient you on the site, so the playground area is in the middle of this, this image, and this site is very well situated in that on the opposite of the fence line, there is driveway and parking lot for the multifamily housing. So it's not an orientation where we have, for example, people's private backyards right across the fence line. There is a large buffer on the residential side of parking and drive aisles. This is a picture looking at the southern property line, so you can see, this is looking from the residence towards the playground. You can see the very tall masonry wall on the eastern property line to the right, and then the southern property line to the left, which this shows the entire property, southern property line. It also shows you the expanse of the buffer between the playground, the, the sound wall, and even the nearest residents. So with that, I'll wrap up and look forward to hearing public comment and coming back to share some more information afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so thank you all, members of the public, for being here tonight. At this time, we'll do public comments. Each speaker will have two minutes per person. I have a stack of speaker cards here. I'll call these out first. If anybody, please fill out a speaker card if you'd like to speak, but also check at the end if there's anybody else. We'll start with Rebecca Bender, and then afterwards, Emmeline McCann.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm here today as president of the Ventana Place Homeowners Association, representing approximately 100 homeowners and residents of our community. I am here to express our strong opposition to the proposed expansion of playground hours at Primrose, specifically allowing the children to play outside throughout the day on all four playgrounds, not three. Our opposition is rooted in the significant noise disturbance caused by children at Primrose Daycare. Our homes are a mere 90 feet, not 200 feet, from the daycare's property line, and the noise, particularly the high-pitched screeching, disrupts our daily lives. Many of us work from home and rely on a quiet environment for productivity. The noise makes it difficult to concentrate, to engage in work-related activities, or communicate effectively on phone calls. This disruption forces us to leave our homes to find a peaceful work environment to be elsewhere. Noise-canceling headphones, I've bought three pairs, do not screen out the screeching noises of the children. We feel it's unfair that we have to go elsewhere. Furthermore, the constant noise not only hinders our daily activities, but greatly affects the value of our homes. Despite our attempts to address these issues with Primrose, including requesting a much higher sound barrier, because the wall that you saw in the picture only protects our garages, not our living space, there has not been improvement. The proposed expansion of playground hours, combined with the existing setup and lack of noise mitigation, will only intensify the noise pollution and make it untenable for residents to enjoy their homes during the weekdays. We urge the Planning Commission to take immediate action to address the issue, including denying the expansion...
And that concludes your time. Thank you. There were two minutes. I'm sorry, it's two minutes per speaker. Okay, thank you. Okay, and also just so folks know, the microphone does turn off at two minutes. All right, Emmeline McCann, and then Curtis Choi.
Good evening. So my name is Emmeline McCann. I'm the operation coordinator at Primrose School of Cupertino. In the morning, I welcome our families and take our children's temperature while they're being checked in. Children are being dropped off at a very different time in the morning. Also, children are not following a very fixed schedule, often especially younger children, for example, children from 12 months old to 24 months old, are sleeping in the morning, so they're taking that morning nap. If they're sleeping in the mornings, then we have to take them outside later in the morning, or we have to split them in two groups. Being able to have that free outdoor playtime is extremely important for their development, from like gross motor skills, but also social skills. Children are really developing through free play, and by being able to offer them that extra time outside, not just the scheduled outdoor time, but free play outside, will benefit their whole development. That is why we're trying to provide this time for their, sorry, for their needs of development. So that is the reason why we need this playground time for them, to feed their needs from younger children and older children as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next Curtis Choi, and then Praveen Chandra.
Esteemed members of the Planning Commission, my name's Curtis Choi. I have two daughters currently going to Primrose School. Amelia's five, Emmy's two and a half. And there's a couple of things I want to say in support of the expanded hours. First, we can look at the science, right? So there's First Five California, that is state and federally funded, that is run by the county, and they show that outdoor play supports emotional, cognitive, and social development, and it's vital to the development of children this age. Secondly, professionally, I'm an eye doctor. I've been one for 16 years. I practiced in this county the last 11 years. I can tell you, not a day goes by that I don't have a parent ask me, "How can my kids be less nearsighted?" I tell them, "The first thing you can do, immediately, free and effective, let them play outside." Okay, that relaxes the focus of your eyes. It helps you to be more farsighted, okay? Now, on a personal level, I want to say this. Prior to going to Primrose by daughters, they went to other preschools, they've had a nanny, they've had their grandparents take care of them. Only now at Primrose are they thriving. The reason for that is a few things. First of all, they're in the care of experts, they are licensed experts, and it's the curriculum. Part of that curriculum? Outdoor play. So if you're going to pigeonhole the kids into certain hours of day where they can go outside, you are really hamstringing the teachers, because what if there's inclement weather? What if there's a change to the schedule? There is no flexibility. Additionally, I just want to add this. So if we are actually expanding the playground hours, that would allow kids to stagger their playtimes. So really, I want to say, we're kind of on the same side, because by staggering playtimes, there's actually probably going to be less noise and not more. So the side that we're on, we're on the side of the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Praveen Chandra, and then Monica.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Praveen Chandra, and I've been living here in California for five years. I came from Hong Kong. I lived there for 12 years, and I enjoy California because Hong Kong was a very compressed environment, and you've got 500 square feet houses, so kids absolutely love here. I've been part of the community at Primrose for about two years, and, and my child is very athletic, and she enjoys her gymnastics, swimming, and overall development outside of school. She envisions that in her school as well, so I would like to advocate for extended playtime because that helps her build and develop her personality, and will be helping with overall social, emotional development of the child. My daughter used to go to Bright Horizon, which is a play-based school, and she used to love it. And, and there is another school here, which is Ventana, which is also play, play-based school. So play-based schools have been around for a very long period of time, and the research shows that, that helps kids in overall development in, in the future. The Primrose staff is extremely competent, they are wonderful, and they welcome students, and they wish absolutely the best for, for the kids. There are a number of schools here in the Bay Area. We believe that the noise that we have typically from, from, from my personal experience, from traffic and other things are a lot more there, while the kids are pretty subtle in their playtime. With my experience from COVID, they really enjoy the, the playtime now, after COVID times, so I firmly believe that you should approve the extended play hours for Primrose. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica, and then Cassandra.
Thank you, Chair and Commission, and we really appreciate this. My name is Monica, and I'm the executive director at both Primrose School of Cupertino as well as Willow Glen. I started out as a director at Willow Glen, and that is in very close proximity to apartments and townhouses, even closer than the Ventana Apartments are. And in the seven years of existence of the Willow Glen location, there has not ever been any noise complaints whatsoever. That school is large, it has over 200 children, so with the amount of children that are outside on any given day, you would expect there to be some kind of complaint, and there has never been. So another point to make is that weather here in California often changes. We get cold temperatures, we get warm temperatures. As a director, I have to follow the childcare weather chart from licensing to dictate to me when children can go outside. So a lot of times, the flexibility is needed when I have to alter the outside times, whether it's too cold or too warm. And with these restrictions, my flexibility lessens, and the children get less outside playtime, which we know is impactful in their development. It is very much needed on a regular, any given day basis. Childcare licensing requires that children go outside at least two times a day, for approximately 45 minutes in the morning, and hopefully 45 minutes in the evening. We have been restricted for quite some time to about 30 minutes each time because of these current restrictions that we are facing. So we are in need of expanding these hours to, like Mr. Choi said, help with their growth and development. I do understand the concerns raised by Ventana Apartments, and absolutely do sympathize for any noise, you know, concerns that they do have, but restricting a child from screaming or screeching while outside is almost like asking lions not to roar in savannas. You just can't do that. So, I mean, they are very young children, and so when they go outside, they want to express themselves, run around, exert themselves, and, you know, just get their wiggles out as much as humanly possible. So the noise that they are, you know, sharing outside is all because they want to have fun and play with their friends and, you know, develop. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have Cassandra, and then Heng Zhao.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Cassandra Burgess, and I've been teaching for the past 22 years. I know I look young. However, I've been, I am currently a pre-K teacher at Primrose School of Cupertino, and I have the pleasure of teaching 24 beautiful children. So as an educator, I know how essential outdoor play is for a child's well-being and their growth and their motor skills. We depend on taking our children outside daily so that they can learn, grow, and develop, not just their fine motor skills, but also their gross motor skills, and also connect with their peers with social and emotional development. We also have specific areas of our curriculum that we focus on, such as our Thumbs Up, which is our outdoor play, where we teach them different games like dribbling, catching, throwing, jumping. We also have other areas, such as our STEAM and our Noggin Joggin, so our STEAM, Science Technology. We were learning about the clouds. We all went outside to look up in the sky to look at the different types of clouds. So we also have Noggin Joggin and our weather, where we need to see, looking for the moon. Can we see the stars during the day? Where is the sun? We have various times where we have to implement these curriculums throughout the day. In addition, each classroom is responsible for taking care of our perimeter. In addition, each classroom is responsible for taking care of our Primrose Patch, which is our garden. My class, we harvested, we took up the dirt, allergies were in play. We continue to go and monitor our playground or our patch to see if we are growing. We have carrots, we have plants, different vegetables and flowers growing. And we're teaching responsibility to these young children to come and be responsible and care for the earth. So I'm asking for the extended playground hours because it is hard for only 30 minutes a day to take a four- and five-year-old out. And by the time we get out, we do a name-to-face, our time is up. So please consider extending. Thank you.
Thank you. Heng Zhao and then, I think it says, Danit? Oh, Danit, excuse me.
Hi, hello Commissioner. My name is Heng Zhao, and I am a resident of San Jose and the father of my daughter, which is three-year-old. Her name is Megan. She's been in the Primrose program for two years already. Her time at Primrose has been a pretty transformative experience. And I'm here today to advocate for the extension of the playground hours that would further enhance her learning and development. So outdoor activities, as everybody knows, are not just a pastime, but crucial component of the early childhood development. Scientific research, you know, tons of, including studies from Harvard Medical School and Mayo Clinic, consistently highlight the benefits of daily outdoor play for schools, for children's physical and cognitive development, which includes access of sunshine, physical exercise, exposure to outdoor environment, a sense of freedom, and an excellent exposure to appropriate risk. Primrose is an outstanding childcare facility. We have been very satisfied by their service. And they always advocate for children's welfare. They utilize their outdoor space for outdoor activities whenever possible, but sometimes weather does not allow, like, extreme heat. And they need the extension to schedule during that hard time. So for this reason, I request our commissioners consider the welfare and the necessity of outdoor activities for children when deciding on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Danit? And then, after that, the card I have doesn't have a name on it. So any folks who would also like to speak, you can go afterwards.
Good evening, and thank you, Planning Commission and Committee. I'm here to, let me introduce myself, my name is Danit Reitman, and I am the education coach at the school, and I oversee curriculum implementation. And before I go into more, you heard, it is, I've been, the truth is 35 years in the field, and it's crucial. For brain development, the gross motor has to happen, and to be outside is crucial. 30 minutes is most certainly not enough, and 45 minutes is what is advised for a child to grow and develop naturally and well. I also want to bring up that I, part of my job is to do observations in the classrooms and find out about developmental issues with children. And some of the things that I've noticed was speech delay. We cater to children ages 12 months to five years. And many of our younger children especially, we have about 124 enrolled, and about 58 children are under the age of two, and their verbal skills are not yet developed, or there's a delay. And when I discover that, I bring it up to the parents, and we work together on avenues to help the child develop their speech. And I just want to mention that it's about 5% to 10% of our kids that have a delay and are on that spectrum, and work with a therapist to develop their speech. So noise level granted by such kids is significantly lower compared to elementary school children who are very verbal and can be vocal and loud. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. If you could please state your name, you have two minutes.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Chin. I've been a Bay Area resident for decades, and it's in San Jose that my wife and I planted roots and welcomed our children into our lives and into the world. My family has been part of the Primrose School since its opening. We're thankful to be part of a diverse community with a well-rounded approach to child development, and of course, a safe and fun environment to explore, engage, and grow, especially through play. Indeed, the benefits of structured and unstructured play have been broadly researched, calling attention to the critical importance of play in children's physical, social, emotional, and intellectual development. The Harvard Graduate School of Education documents this and has highlighted the need to foster play, especially when free play is often at odds with a tightly scheduled world. Plan for play and create the space for it is what Harvard GSE recommends. Research also demonstrates the physiological benefits of regular daily exposure to outdoors and sunlight, such as in preventing myopia or nearsightedness. As a parent, I've seen the immense value of play and regular access to the playground for my girls. My favorite time to visit school is during playground time. There, I've watched them interact with others, develop their own individual big-girl voices, learning to express themselves and communicate both independently and collaboratively. On the playground, they learn to practice the essentials of social interaction and responsibility, forming the building blocks of civic engagement and citizenship. Our girls frequently discuss with us their interactions and observations on the playground, and we talk about how they feel and can respond. In this way, the playground is a metaphor for our society. It's in that hope and that vision that I advocate for our children, for our playground, for the outdoor time and play that is essential for child development and health, and for the daily play.
That concludes your time. Thank you. All right, do we have any other members of the public who'd like to speak? If not, we'll conclude public comment and then provide an additional five minutes to the applicant.
Can you take down the timer so I can share my screen? Thank you Chair Lardinois, members of the Commission. First of all, I wanted just to emphasize that we're not asking for extended hours. We're not asking for special hours. We're asking to have regular hours, just like almost all other childcare facilities in the city of San Jose, and consistent with city policy. So let's just look at some of the other childcare facilities. I could bring dozens of these to you, but I'll give you a sampling. So this is on the screen, the Kitty Academy Childcare in Almeda Valley on Almeda Expressway. As you can see on the top of the page, which would be south and west, this facility is immediately adjacent to single-family homes. The backyards of those single-family homes are immediately adjacent to the childcare facility and the playground. And the CUP for this facility allows the playground to be open 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This is Primrose School in Willow Glen, which is on Hamilton, just east of Meridian. And as you can see, this was referenced by some of our speakers, right behind the facility is a townhome community. Literally, the residential units are across the fence from the playground. And the allowed playground hours here are 7:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. This is the Action Day School on Moore Park. And this is an older facility. However, it's had recent expansion. And you can see the playground is dispersed through the middle of the campus, but to the back of the property and the side of the property are single-family and apartment homes immediately adjacent to the play area. And the allowed hours for the playground here are 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then lastly, just as a sample, I could go on all night with these. This is the Santa Day Day Nursery, which is on 8th Street downtown, just a couple of blocks here from City Hall. And you can see the playground is quite extensive, play area, asphalt play area, literally on the fence line of a single-family home and apartment, Victorian apartment units. And there are no restrictions for this playground. It can be open 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So all we're asking tonight is that our facility have a chance to have normal hours, just like any, I'm trying to go backwards, sorry, just like most all other childcare facilities in the city. And this owner has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on sound walls. This, in my experience, this is probably the most fortified childcare playground I've ever seen. And I've been involved with quite a few of these facilities. Once again, you can see the walls. And the owner is being reasonable in their request. The city's policy would allow us to use the playground from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We're not asking for that. Our overall hours of operation are less than allowed by city policy, and the hours we're asking for the playground are significantly less than the maximum that are permitted. Lastly, I'll just close with some interesting tidbits from the noise study that was conducted as part of the SEQA analysis. One of those tidbits is that the noise from the playground actually is less than the ambient noise from the heavy vehicle traffic along Deansa Boulevard. So in other words, the ambient noise is more than the children's noise. That's not to say you can't hear the kids, of course you can. And then the second interesting point about work from home is that according to the Acoustical Expert, the projected interior noise levels are 35 decibels from the children's noise. The city's standard for interior noise is 45 decibels. So even with the children's noise, it is at levels significantly below the city standard for interior noise. So for all of those reasons, we hope that you will grant normal operating hours for this childcare.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will, if I can get my tablet to, oh, that's the wrong button. All right, we'll turn it over to the Commission. I see Commissioners Oliverio and Cantrell.
Thank you Chair. So I've had a long life up here on this dais, and I've seen many, many, many childcare centers come before the council or the planning commission. And for the lady representing the folks at the Ventana, I want to say, the point of view you've expressed, I've heard many times, so it's not unfounded. But I've never seen the commission or the city council deny because the overwhelming benefit of childcare to the community. So I just want to let you know that, but it's never stopped that from happening because of the dire need we have in our community for daycare. I remember one time, there was a committee members, they wanted me to have the council, and we were going to buy some land for a park, and I was sharing that. And then they said, "Will there be kids there?" And I'm like, "Yeah." They're like, "Ah, I'm not sure." And so, you know, this does exist, this paradox about what people want versus reality. So I just want to put that out there because I don't want to make you feel bad. But what I will tell you is that Primrose is a premier childcare facility in San Jose. The proprietors, SEMA and Amar, are amazing. I dealt with them when they opened their facility in Willow Glen. And as the speaker noted, they are right adjacent to residential. And the comments we got were, "Was the noise?" The consistent topic of noise, and there was never a complaint once they were in operation. And so I just think it's, you know, I don't know, I'll be real simple. I think we should support the staff recommendation. I think we should support what the applicant wants. I would even go one step further and say, "We should grant the hours of their operation hours." Because if a parent is unable to pick up their child because of a car accident or traffic, that kid can't stay out till 5:45 instead of 5:30? It seems irrational. So I would just make a motion to support the recommendation, however modify it to match the operational hours that the facility is open. And then it's Primrose's choice whether to use that or not based on discretion, whether it's allowing regular play or just for that kid that's waiting for their parent to pick them up.
Okay, so just to get that done. So Commissioner Oliverio has a motion with a second from Commissioner Casey to approve the permit, but amend it to allow playground hours from, I believe that'd be 7:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m.
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll keep that on the table.
Which I believe is still within what the city puts in for the peaks, right? Because I think the peak starts at 7:00 and then 7:00 p.m.
Right, I think, yeah, 7:00 to 6:00 was the city limit. Okay. All right, and Commissioner Cantrell has his hand up, so we'll continue discussion with that motion up in the air.
Okay. Actually, this won't be long. I understand that the children are noisy. I raised some myself. I actually work right next to, literally on our campus, is a childcare center. And I understand some people can be bothered by some noise. I think we can all learn to relax a bit and enjoy the sound of children playing. I don't think that's difficult. I do it every day, as a matter of fact. I walk down the hall, sometimes just watch them play because for me, that just relaxes me in a stressful day. I think we can embrace this. I think, as Commissioner Oliverio said, this is important to our community. The harm done by this actually can be converted into joy if you let it. So I support this. Thanks.
Commissioner Bickford?
Thank you Chair. I have two questions. I'm always supportive, by the way, of children going outside to play. I have lived for years next to a schoolyard, and I agree with my colleague that those noises can bring you joy if you let them. I do have two questions. The first question is, I heard the speaker from Ventana Place say something about four playgrounds, not three. I believe that we're talking about three playgrounds plus the area where they're, where they have a planting? Is that what we're, so can I just get clarification? Are we talking about three playgrounds or four? Because I saw three in the diagram or in the representation, right?
There were originally three playgrounds. Then they took out a number of parking spaces and made another space that is an asphalt space where you could have a, I don't think it's big enough for a tennis court, but a badminton court, or where it's, where a lot of children could assemble at once. It's an asphalt area.
I see. Thank you. The second question that I have for you actually is, I heard somebody say there have never been any complaints to the school. Has your association filed any complaints to the school about noise?
Yes, I've even met with the owners and requested help. I'm not against children playing, that's fine. I can, children's normal playing noise, no problem. It's the screeching at the top of the lungs that goes uncontrolled that is the problem.
I see. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Children need to be... Children need to play.
All right, I don't see any other hands up. Oh, sorry, Vice Chair Nelswise?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Today, it's been a delight to see your love and compassion for the children, including the staff, even when it's your time off and away from the kids, to come and advocate for the children. I am a mother of young children. I understand. I, I also commend the parents. I know it's not always easy to be a parent, but to have adequate childcare and providers is, is something very valuable to the community. I, when I was a little girl, lived on a thirty-acre farm in Morgan Hill from the ages of three to seven. And it was wonderful to be outside and I wish every child had that ability. So I agree with my colleagues up here and I, I definitely am in support and approval. And I commend you for being here and I, I hope that you always advocate for children the way you showed up today. Thank you.
Thank you. So city staff just advised that I ask the applicant, are you amenable to Commissioner Oliverio's motion or amendment to your request? Yeah, okay, we got affirmation there. Okay, so before we, I don't see any other hands up, but before we have a vote, I just want to say, so I work from home as well. I live across the street from a school and I don't have any children that, you know, not going to, that school doesn't benefit me personally, but I recognize the importance of having that kind of use in residential areas. And when I was a child, which wasn't that long ago, I, you know, went to a daycare facility that was in a single-family home neighborhood with single-family homes on every side of the property. And if that wasn't there, I don't know if I would have been able to have access to that kind of service. So I think this use is really important. I voted for the original permit when it came to the Planning Commission in 2020. And I also support extending this to allow them more flexibility for when kids can use the play areas. So just as a reminder, our motion is from Commissioner Oliverio, second from Casey, to approve the permit with, but amending it to be from seven-thirty to six-thirty. We'll go to a roll call vote. Vice Chair Nelswise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barosio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And myself, yes. That's eleven yes, zero no. It's approved. Okay, a few more items on the agenda. Do we have any referrals from city council, boards, commissions, or other agencies?
No.
No.
Good and welfare, do we have a report from city council?
Yeah, there was one item that went on Tuesday that had gone before the Planning Commission. That was for a conditional use permit amendment on two seven zero one McKee Road. You guys had recommended approval of the project. It went to city council on the consent counter, wasn't, political consent counter, was approved.
Thank you. Anything for subcommittee formation reports or outstanding business?
No.
Okay, and then for commission calendar and study sessions, I have a note here that on May eighth, we'll have a special meeting for the 2024 to 2025 capital budget and 2025 to 2029 capital improvement program. Any other updates to the calendar?
The next agenda will reflect that, but I believe it will start at five PM, I mean, five PM.
The May eighth meeting?
The May, for the study session.
Right, yeah.
We'll see what we can do. But I would say that it is a, a very, will be a very dense budget, given the current situation.
Sure.
So we apologize in advance if it's a very big document provided.
Okay, we'll note in the record that Commissioner Oliverio requested a buffet.
I was trying to ignore that request.
Anything for the public record?
No.
Commissioner Torrios?
Thank you. Just one quick question for staff. I was curious if at some point it'd be possible to receive an update on, you know, builder's remedy and kind of the status of applications, how many of them have been, you know, processed versus how many of them the city will not be moving forward with in light of the, you know, memo that was put out that they wouldn't process applications that came in after June twentieth?
So just as a quick update, we process any application or any appointment that been requested of us and made many accommodations for them to reach the deadlines. So we haven't denied any of them being taken in for consideration.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bickford?
I'm not sure it's the purview of this Planning Commission, but I am curious about what has happened with, in the news recently, there were a set of condos that were sold at a very low price and it seemed to have had to do with a building that remained unoccupied and some pass due fees. I would love to know a little bit more about that and I, I don't, I just don't know if this is the appropriate place to understand that.
It's not agendas, but feel free, if you want to, to contact staff. We're kind of familiar with that project. But at that, this point, it's purely a civil matter among the owners as well as the actions of, I believe, the HOA residents. But staff is happy, well, more than willing to have a discussion about that.
Okay. That is the end of tonight's agenda. We are adjourned at seven forty-two PM. Thanks, everybody.